Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Monday, July 25th, regular, or 15th party, the Bloom Carroll School District. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Abbott, Mrs. Bender.
President.
Mr. Bratton.
President.
Mr. Johnson.
President.
Mrs. Sherman.
President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, purple of the agenda. Does anybody have any, do we have any changes?
None.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Bratton, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bratton.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Bender.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman.
Yes. And the minutes from the June 10th meeting. Anybody have any questions or?
I refuse to say anything.
Good? All right, I'll make this motion. Motion made by Jen Sherman, seconded by Rod Johnson. Can you roll call, please?
Mrs. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Bender.
Yes.
And Mr. Bratton.
Yes.
All right, public participation. Tonight, we have, we've no one signed up.
No.
Okay, we'll start with the athletic boosters updates. Miss Mayamal.
Thank you so much for having me. I will keep this short, it's long here. My name is Amanda Mullin, and I am here on behalf of the Athletic Boosters. I'm happy to report since the last time we were here, we've continued to have great success in fundraising for our athletes. We made some money for purchases for them over the last year. What is being passed around is our July 1st, 23 through June 30th, 24, kind of overview of our expenses prepared by our treasurer and our plans. In the recent years, we've hit some concession numbers. We think God might be unbeatable. I'm happy to report that we were wrong. This is a huge credit to Devin Burdy, who's here, and countless hours that she puts in. And I add, not just for the Athletic Boosters, but for the Music Boosters as well. Our annual end of races, of course, was not quite the same without our Barb putting our team rally together, and we were able to continue that tradition. We saw lots of new faces, which is exciting, in hopes that that tradition continues on and on and on through the years. We were able to do some exciting things this year, and you can see that as evidenced by our numbers. But just a few things to touch on that we were able to do. Most recently is help Mr. Herges with financing of the new weight room. And the boosters are especially excited when we can do things that impact every single sport in the school. It makes a huge difference when everybody can benefit. As far as uniforms, we've just named a few. Purchased softball uniforms, football uniforms, wrestling, track. We spent over $40,000 on equipment indoor track one runways. Stuff in the weight room. We were able to use our Pepsi plan, our contact with them, for new softball and batting cages this year. Of course, our two scholarship winners this year were Lenny Appen and Colby Sprague. Dave received $1,000. And we'd love to continue them on as well. So things are great. Things are looking great for the Athletic Boosters. We have two important dates coming up. August 3rd is our annual booster drive. We're excited to have Mr. Herges along that journey with us and some really more exciting things that are going to happen that day, too. Not just the booster drive, which I think will get a lot more participation. So we're excited to see what those numbers turn out. And then, of course, October 6th, our Ba'ha'la. So we hope to see you guys there. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Deb, thank you so much for everything you do. You're such an integral part of all that. We just want to publicly acknowledge your efforts. We really, really appreciate it.
Amanda, you two, I think we have the same officers returning for the next year?
Yes, yes, just our officers, our new officers and the same officers.
That's a key team with Deb and the officers. It's important that you guys step up, and we appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
You guys are awesome. Thank you so much for the update. Appreciate it. Mr. Herges, athletics.
First of all, I want to thank the Board of Education for allowing me the opportunity to serve as the Athletic Director at Bloom Carroll. Heading into my 24th year, I believe, this year, and my second at Bloom Carroll. I think I found my forever home here. This district is absolutely amazing. I brag about this district all the time. Our kids here, top notch. I mean, the minute I walked in, I could tell that the kids care about what's going on around here, the community does. So, you know, from the outside looking in, and I try to tell people in this community that we got it going on here. And I'm happy to be a part of that. So again, thank you for the opportunity. I've got three pages. I'm not going to read everything, but just highlight some things. I think the most impressive number that I can give to you is that 172 of our student athletes made the Mid-State League All-Academic. That's a huge number. We had about 410 student athletes last year. And when I say 410, that's if they played more than one sport, they're included in that number. But 172 students, athletes, and that MSO All-Academic is a student athlete having a 3.5 or higher during their season. And that's a testament to what our student athletes believe in, and that's education coming first and foremost. And then using the extracurricular activities to keep their performance in the classroom required. We had 45 first-team Mid-State Leaguers this year, 53 second-team Mid-State Leaguers, and 26 honorable-mentioned Mid-State Leaguers. And as far as titles, we earned five MSL titles this year. Some other highlights was the girls soccer team winning the district championship and the girls basketball team winning the district championship. We had three district runner-ups also this year. And we're looking for more excitement this year in regards to winning some more district championships and winning some regional titles and getting to the state. We had eight Mid-State League Player of the Year award winners. I listed those to you, for you. Individual accolades that really stand out. Tristan Bridge placed eighth this year at the state wrestling meet up at the Schottenstein Center. We had five first-team Ohioans, and something that's kind of impressive, I've never experienced in my history as an athletic director, but Emily Bratton was a finalist for Miss Ohio Basketball. So that speaks volumes of what she's done throughout her career. Some other notes, just facts, just to kind of present to the board. This year, Bloom Carroll finished second in the All-Sports Trophy for the Mid-State League Buckeye. We tallied 110 points. Taze Valley finished with 127. With Taze Valley moving out of the league, it's our time to shine and lead the Mid-State League. So that's going to be a challenge and a goal for our student athletes and coaches this year to win that title. The Mid-State League rates for officials increased. They continue to increase. The Ohio High School Athletic Association increased their fees by $10 for officials in beginning tournaments in the Mid-State League. Then, in regards to that, they go 90, 80, 70, 90% for varsity, 80 for JV, 70% for middle school. And this year, we spent roughly $66,750 on officials and gate workers. So that's a lot of money that we put towards officials. And this year, it should stay stable. We may have to increase the soccer fees a few dollars. But other than that, the following year, the state's talking about lease raising rates by another five, the $10, which tends to increase our fees for officials. Our Ohio High School Athletic Association numbers for this year, boys, 265, girls, 304. That's compared to 285 for boys. The boys dropped by 20. And for the girls, they bumped up from 259 a year ago. So that kind of shocked us all. But that's going to put our girls in higher divisions in regards to competition in the coming, the next two years of the cycle. The Ohio High School Athletic Association has expanded divisions for the '24, '25 school year. Soccer will move to five divisions. Volleyball will have seven, along with basketball, baseball, and softball. Where that puts us at in volleyball, we'll be a D3 school. Football, we are a D3 school. Girls soccer, we will be D3, along with boys, D3. Girls basketball, D3, and boys' basketball, D4. They have not released the numbers yet for baseball and softball, but they will probably fall in line with what the girls' basketball divisions are. Because of the increase in girls, girls golf and girls tennis will be considered Division I this year. So we're teetering on that in retrospect of being D2, D3.
And the boys' golf, D1?
They are D2 this year.
Okay.
Yes, because of the decrease in numbers.
I got you.
They will be D2. A couple highlights. Towards the middle of the year, we formed a Student Leadership Council. It consists of 10 juniors and 10 seniors representing all sports. And we are, will be in the process. We've started that. I'm doing a book study from the book title, The Team Captain's Leadership Manual. We've had three or four meetings already, and we presented the Leadership Student Council with the books. And we're going to begin that in August in regards to that. The purpose of that is to kind of give our kids a voice, give them some responsibility, and also leadership capabilities of taking our sports programs to the next level. When I say next level, it's not necessarily winning in the wins and losses, but how we carry ourselves when we go to other schools, our character, our leadership. Those are important things that we're looking for and trying to build up with our student athletes. In regards to the August 3rd kickoff, which Amanda mentioned, that booster drive will take place. And then, at the conclusion of that, we'll have all of our student athletes come back to the school. We'll serve a pizza, give them something to eat. And then, all 9 through 12 student athletes will be meeting in the auditorium. And we are bringing the guest speaker from Practice Coaching, Mike Morgan. We're going to start at 1 o'clock, so if you as a board, if you're interested in being a part of that, just kind of seeing what this is about. I've had speakers in previous schools and a lot of conferences I've been to from the practice coaching standpoint. They have a wealth of knowledge. There is no doubt that once this is done, completed, that our student athletes are going to walk out with a little extra hop to their step. This is a great opportunity for our student athletes to hear Mike speak. I've not heard Mike speak, but I'm excited. What's interesting about Mike is he's from the state of Washington. He's been the head football coach for 30-some years. And his day job is the band director. So it's kind of an interesting twist for our student athletes to kind of hear that. I put down there what we're going to talk about. We've got three sessions, life lessons for our athletes. Those are the subject areas that I've asked him to talk about. And then, once that first hour's over, we're going to take our Leadership Council and then two leaders from each team, from each grade level. We're inviting them in to be a part of that second round where he's going to talk about captains, seven ways to lead, and talk about how important it is in regards to leadership. And then, after that, for the third hour, he's going to be talking to our entire coaching staff, the power of your words. So I'm excited about this opportunity, and I know our coaches are. And once, I said, once the student athletes hear this, it's really going to kickstart the athletic season. Two other things. This year, we are starting concussion baseline testing. I just value the safety, and I'm all about safety. And this is something that hasn't really been done here at Bloom Carroll, but I've practiced this in other districts. But we're going to begin that for our high school athletes that are involved in a contact sport. So in the fall, it will be football, it will be volleyball, and it will be soccer. And all of our student athletes, basically what it is, we'll get them in a computer lab where it's quiet, it's a computer-type program. They will sit and do a baseline test. It's a series of things that go through. We record that. So when a student athlete suffers a head injury or a concussion, we can then give them the baseline testing again. And you've got a before and an after injury, and then that is information that will be used by the doctors, the trainers, and those individuals that will be involved, that student athlete. So it's a great tool. It's free, and I'm really excited to bring that to our attention. Every student athlete in those sports will have to have this testing done before their first official game. So Jeff is going to be kickstarting that here at the end of July. We'll work on getting dates for the coaches to get kids in and out. And finally, as mentioned about the Athletic Boosters, you know, another group of individuals that I'm beyond impressed with, they raise money like there's no tomorrow. And the fact that they were able to finance our brand-new press box this year, you know, really speaks volumes. Baseball batting cages for baseball softball is a huge part of it. And then, our weight room equipment, we were able to purchase $45,000 in weight room equipment. So currently, we have six stations. We're going to expand that to 13 stations in the weight room. And that should be in by the end of August. That's the target date. So we are excited about that. The $45,000 project, the boosters, able to fund 35 of that, and then I'll take $10,000 out of athletics to fund that. And that will take care of all our student athletes.
Awesome. That's great news. Thank you.
Any questions?
Good work. We're glad to have you.
Excited. Excited for your two.
Enjoy your next week or so, because it's going to hit you.
I'll be back Monday, bright and early.
It's going to hit you fast. Yeah.
Thanks, Larry. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, onto Treasuries, Recognition, and Reports. Travis?
Okay, item A is approved. The June financial statements for a total expense of $13,356,000, here on $21.49, including $10.52 in the consortium expenses. The majority of my presentation with the B and fiscal year end is in item B, so unless there's any specific questions, we can entertain a vote at this point, probably.
Question made by Jen Sherman, seconded by Matt Bratton. Can you get the roll call, please?
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Item B is approved. The fiscal '24 financial summary report. Hopefully, you're able to pull that up from your packet. Obviously, I can't project it right now, but if you do have it pulled up as a PDF from the packet. Page two, as I like to do, is to really, as succinctly as possible, to try to really just simplify our general fund as a snapshot, as of June 30th, and get this on the web, and really communicate our fiscal position as a district. You can see our general fund operating revenues, our general fund operating expenditures. Revenues grew by 11.43%. And our budget grew by 6.70%. Carryover, operating surplus, which is surprising, if you would ask me this time last year, I wouldn't have been close to this, but 3.22 million. So we've added that to our cash balance, bringing us to just under 9.8 million as of June 30th of '24. And really, again, you've seen this a lot. The way I like to measure that is the cash balance has a percentage of our budget. We'd like to be around at least 25%. That's kind of changed with districts and kind of some recommendations from our professional organizations. But with the 9.8 million, we're at 38.2% of our budget with our cash balance. And again, that's kind of a double-edged sword in terms of we want to continue to invest back into the staff, into the students, you know, obviously, safety, and make sure everybody has what they need, but still living within our fiscal constraints while continuing to invest in what matters. So I'm happy with where we are at June 30th. And then, true days cash, if no money came in, we could still operate for 149 days. So, you know, that's another good, kind of a benchmark for school districts and cash balances. The charts there, certainly, as much as we can get into direct instruction with the blue pie chart there, almost 55% of our expenditure is going into direct classroom instruction is a good thing. Obviously, we've got transportation, maintenance, and those operating costs there. They're non-instructional, but are vital and things that we continue to invest in. The Fair School Funding Plan, as you can see, our sources of revenues, of course, our local taxes are always going to fund about 2/3 of our budget. But the state sources actually came up from about 29% last year to 31.65% of our revenue. So the continued phase-in of the Fair School Funding Plan has helped ease that burden a little bit on our local taxpayers. The next page is, and I won't go through this, I've hammered on through this every couple months as we look at the changes from the original forecast. But again, from an accountability standpoint, I always like to tie it back to that November forecast, so that we're not just kind of throwing numbers against the wall and not giving you a baseline. So you can see the difference in the yellow column to the far right. Again, we've addressed this, the public utility tax with the pipeline, and some other things that came in higher than what we thought it would back in November, to the tune of an increase of 4.47% or 1.2 million more. In the grand scheme of things, not a huge difference, but certainly maybe a little too conservative there in November. But that was the variance from the original forecast. Page three, what I'm really happy about, again, looking at the far right, our original budget, we came in at 1.12% under, or $289,500. So that's a testament to our staff, to our teachers, to our administrators, and are classified for operating within the, I don't want to call them constraints, but within the parameters that we set forth for them. I'm very appreciative of that. The last page is just some random information that we're required to compile, and I think it's good to monitor at the year end. First is how many miles we drove with our buses. Looking at our route miles and knowing that our enrollment was actually down, I wouldn't have expected to have an increase in route miles if we're staying efficient, and we didn't. Basically, 2.87 are only $9,500 more route miles, which is good. The trip miles were up a little bit. We had some more teams, some freshman teams that we didn't normally have, some additional teams going further into tournaments, which is a good thing, obviously. So the route miles were up a little bit. But total miles were only at 3.92%, so our diesel costs were able to keep those pretty level. Food service continues to run very efficiently. That fund is ran as a separate business, so that separate 006 fund that you see on our cash summary. I think Marilyn presented here last month. Very efficient. You can see their operating revenue, operating expenses, net income of $179,115 in our food service fund, which takes her balance up to over $1 million. That's obviously some of the post-COVID funding for the free lunches has helped that. But again, those are pretty much all by the wayside, so this was a good, efficient year for our food service. And then, our van usage, vans are not getting any cheaper, so I want to continue to look at how many miles our vans are driving. And obviously, they're more efficient, but I like to put a dollar amount to it. We drove a little over 95,000 miles with our four vans. If we would have driven those same miles with our buses, you can see the change in, obviously, the miles per gallon in the diesel versus unleaded. So we've saved almost $27,000 this past fiscal year. That really kind of pays back those vans, quite frankly. So again, probably more detail than you needed there on the last page, but I like where we are at fiscal year end. Our carryover is not going to be this high this time next year, just for various reasons that I'll get into as we, our finance committee meets as we get to the fall forecast. But I'm very happy with where we are financially as a district as we head into fiscal '25. Any questions on the fiscal '24 financial summary report?
We don't have those vans, right?
Yes.
So then, are you, like buses? I know last year, we talked about, are we, how are we looking?
We've got one bus in the budget that you approved in the wish list that should be here in September. Probably next year at this time, we're going to have to fund more than one, which we should be in a good position to do so.
Any other questions?
Good work, Travis.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion? Motion made by Matt Bratton, seconded by Rod Johnson. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Item C is approved. The following subrates effective August 1st, 2024. That would be the subnurse, currently at 15. Raise that to $18 per hour. Last year at this time, we increased all the other subrates except for this one. So Mr. Ha and myself thought it was prudent to align this in accordance with the other subrates that we've approved last year at this time.
I'll make this motion. Motion made by Jen Sherman, seconded by Ken Bender. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And finally, item D, we're thankful to recognize the following donations to Bloom Carroll Local School District. Both Advanced Heating &amp; Coing and Dick Mascherer Ford donated money for our golf bags for our golf teams, each in the amount of $2,224.
I'll make this motion, too. Motion made by Jen Sherman, seconded by Rod Johnson. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
And Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Number eight, in your own business? All right, now, super recommendations, recommendations, and reports?
All right, just want to begin, sadly, over the last few days, you may have heard about in the media, local media, news stations and newspapers, that there was a terrible situation that happened over in the Canal Winchester area. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows that our thoughts and prayers of the district are certainly with the family of Alexis Stakely. She is a 2012 Bloom Carroll High School graduate. I know tragic things happen to our graduates and to all of us as they move on. But, you know, she was certainly involved in the education profession as a speech and language pathologist, not at this district. But she is a graduate, and I consider, you know, the last, you know, 10, 12 years as something recent, it was just a very sad incident. So I wanted to bring our attention to that and just let her family know that, you know, they're in our thoughts and prayers. She left a young child behind sadly in a very tragic accident that, or very tragic crime that happened, it sounds like. Moving on, good news academically. Our AP scores, you know, our state testing scores look very good in terms of 15 out of 20 areas, we think, have either, state testing areas improved in terms of the percent of students that are proficient or higher. And, you know, we're very proud of all of our students in grades three through, you know, eight, and then the high school, and of course, exams. But also, I wanted to draw attention to the AP scores. In my opinion, the AP curriculum is more challenging than some of the college credit plus courses we offer. And credit, college credit is not guaranteed to advanced placement students. They have to score three or higher in order to do that. And the great news is that we have a lot of our students that have really been challenging themselves. As the years have gone on, we've had more and more students participating in advanced placement courses. And there was, looking at student achievement data over the last several years, we managed it well getting through the pandemic and everything. But we did see a drop in reading and math scores across the board, like most districts, but not as much, not as much as some places that were not in school. But what I wanted to point out was that our AP scores, we did receive those, and it was great to see that the percent of total AP students with a score of three or better, which means they will earn college credit, was 86.2%, so 94 out of 109 students. And we've gone from 58 students in AP courses in 2020. We've continued to expand that curriculum. We had 109 students taking, you know, taking an AP course in 2024. And we saw a drop from just 2020. We were at 81% that scored a three or higher. We dropped down to 72% in 2022. We went up to 75 in 2023. And now, another jump to 86% of those students scored a three or higher. So I think that's certainly credit to our teachers and our students for challenging themselves and, you know, really engaging and doing well on those AP tests. So congratulations to those students. Any questions about that? Okay. The summer, the summer's filled with, the summer's pretty busy around here, believe it or not. You drive by and it looks kind of quiet, but there's always a lot going on, mainly with capital projects and human capital. The human capital is getting more and more challenging to find, you know, really good candidates for positions. It's something that I think in education, we have to encourage people to go into, the right people, the good people, the intelligent people, to go into education. It's getting harder and harder to find people. But right now, we have a few open positions. I'm really happy with who we've recommended to this state and who we've hired. Our goal is to always get better with every hire. And I certainly wanted to point out that we still need two lunch monitors. We need a middle school counselor. That's on the agenda tonight. And we need a special education aide in grades K to 2. We do have interviews scheduled for that position, August 5th at the elementary school. The principals and the special education director are doing that. But besides that, we have a middle school counselor and two lunch monitor positions to fill, so.
What happened with the half?
It's on the agenda. It's on the agenda tonight.
So we still haven't hired for that?
No.
Okay, so that's all we're doing.
Well, we are tonight, but it's being amended. It's in your packet. And then, enrollment, student capital estimated right now, and it's not an exact science. There's a lot going on with summer registrations, summer withdrawals. Right now, because we have a very below-projected kindergarten class, we have 124 currently in our registered for kindergarten. And that continues to increase every week, but I think we were projected around 162 or something like that. But I think we were projected around one sixty-two or something like that. And then, our first grade class is at a hundred and fifty-one right now. So, those are our smallest classes. Be great if they could just stay there and we could weather this as the years go on. But what happens is you end up with a hundred and fifty, and then you have seven or eight kids move in the next year, seven or eight more the next year. And before you know it, you're in the one eighty-fives, one nineties, and that's pretty much what our enrollment's looking like right now. Compared to the May Board of Education report at the end of the school year, we had two thousand, two hundred and thirty-six students sitting in, on our campuses, in our seats. That does not include your Career Center students and full-time college credit plus students or any alternative placement. But right now, I think we're at two thousand, two hundred and thirty-two students, so we're down four from last year. We've had sixty-one new students register. We've had nine withdrawals. We have seven more waiting, and I'm sure we even have a few more that have been added today. Watching second grade closely. I'm watching that grade level and the class size. But overall, we've done a good job of adding staff over the years, and we've been able to financially and from a space standpoint, weather that storm as well. So, enrollment right now, we're down a few, but I think we'll, it's going to be similar to next year. And I think we're going to have a smaller kindergarten class than what we were projecting. Not we project, not what we projected, but the future thing with enrollment projections. What's that? It was under just a little bit, too. Yeah.
Interesting.
Capital projects, roofing project, there's just, over at the high school, the ag room, that's completed except for some metal flashing on a small stretch on the exterior of the high school, but it is dried in. We've had several torrential rains and everything is staying dry. This building has been patched and repaired. It is dry as well, so those have gone well. Thank you to Dennis Thompson, our maintenance supervisor, for working with the subcontractors on that. The middle school gym, the redesign and taking it all the way down and redoing it, it looks great. There was only one minor issue that was already addressed, and you wouldn't even notice it if you walked in now, if you didn't know. And the high school gym has been redone, just resealed, I want to be clear, just resealed. There was a complete redesign on the middle school gym. The parking lots behind the high school is finished. It's been resealed and painted. The middle school, they still need to do the paint, and they have a small stretch over here behind the old Carroll Elementary or Primary School. Food service, the refrigerator and freezer took a little bit longer than what they anticipated. They had to replace the concrete floor, which was in very poor condition when they tore out the old freezer and refrigerator, but they are finishing that project. Besides that, in June, I attended a county meeting that the ESC hosted to deal with early intervention truancy cases and case management for students, not only in our district, but throughout the county, to have some consistency with how the schools and how the courts manage attendance issues. House Bill four-ten clearly says, which was passed several years ago, what the schools do, and our administration works very hard, working with families, sending notices, communicating with students and their families about what the requirements are for school attendance in the state of Ohio. But, you know, I think honestly, in education, we get a little frustrated. We check all of our boxes. We do everything. We engage with the families. We try to connect with the students and the families. And then, sometimes, when it does get to the court level, the court just doesn't take any action to have any teeth in any consequences in anything. We certainly don't want to remove students from school that are not coming to school. That totally defeats the purpose, but then the courts can do some things with families, parents, legal guardians, and with the students. And they, I'll be honest, there's just, they decriminalized truancy. They don't use the juvenile detention facility, and I understand that. I don't have all the answers, but we're working together as a group to try to develop more early interventions and effective case management for attendance concerns. So, that's something that the ESC is leading. And the courts, the courts wanted to create their own plan. We followed along, and now they're saying it's not working. We want, you know, superintendents, administrators, people in the community to get involved and figure this out. So, we're working on that. I also wanted to point out tonight, it's been busy the last several months, but I wanted to acknowledge that Mr. Steve Spangler, our new Director of Educational Services and Assistant Superintendent, is with us this evening. He officially starts in a couple of weeks, on August first, and very excited to have him joining our district. I look forward to his leadership, working closely with him, helping to just maximize our level of service in every area you could imagine to our students and families and overseeing special ed, gifted. As you know, our English language learner population has skyrocketed by over twenty-five, two thousand, five hundred percent in the last four years. You know, transportation services, food services, gifted services, all student services, and of course, serving as our human resource director and helping us bring in and attract the right people to our district. So, there's a lot on his plate. I want him to obviously get to know people in this district. And, you know, I think the most important piece is developing those relationships and learning how the district works, but we're also interested in new ideas and new ways to improve the district. So, very excited to have Steve. Steve, if you wanted to say hello or anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, sincerely heartfelt gratitude is what I feel towards Sean and working through the opportunity. I'm humbled. I'm excited. It's not very often, as an educator, that you wish your summer away. I can tell you that this summer I'm wishing away because I can't wait for August. Ready to get here, ready to do great things. I think we are going to do great things. Everything in this district is top-notch. Everything is great. I want to make these things. Things that are good, I want to make great. You know, I just want to get, be better, serve, and lead. So, I'm thankful and looking forward to it.
Look, and again, welcome, welcome to the district. I'm very excited to have you here. Just a reminder, he's also serving, we have several titles that our special ed director gets pulled away from special ed for, and he will have these titles, including, you know, the Title IX Coordinator, those investigations and student situations can take quite a while. Office of Civil Rights Coordinator, as I said, Foster Liaison, Homeless Liaison, working with the courts and all those families to make sure that we are effective in providing services at the highest level possible. So, I think that's it. Any questions about my update? Okay, let's move on to nine B under Students and Programs. Number one, approve the following two thousand, twenty-four, twenty-five high school class fees as presented, A through T. Number two, approve the following two thousand, twenty-four, twenty-five middle school fees. Again, no increase in these next few fees from the previous school year as presented for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Number three, approve the following two-four, twenty-five elementary school supply and technology fees as presented for kindergarten through second grade, third and fourth grade, and also the fifth grade fees as listed in the agenda. Number four, approve the following cafeteria prices for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Again, for students for breakfast, a dollar twenty-five for lunch. Grades K to eight, two ninety, and grades nine through twelve, three dollars. Again, no change. Travis just went over the end-of-year report for the food service, and we're managing there, so we don't see a reason to increase those fees at this time. Number five, approve the May, approve May two thousand, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-five as the date for the junior, senior prom to be held at the Aladdin Shrine Center in Grove City from seven to ten P.M. Number six, approve an overnight trip for Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Bachman, and the FFA officer team to go to Logan, Ohio, July fourteenth through the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Number seven, approve the proposed middle school and high school ELA resources in your packet. And I think we have to vote. Yeah, you gotta go back.
Can I get a motion? Rod Johnson, motion made by Rod Johnson, seconded by Matt Braden. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
All right, let's move on to nine C under Personnel. Number one, amend agenda item nine C two from the April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting agenda from approving the addition of one part-time, four-nines middle school teacher to approving the addition of one full-time middle school teaching position effective with the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So, Mrs. Sherman, that kind of answers your question. We just felt like with where we're at at the end of the fiscal year, we were not going to settle for a candidate. We know we're going to need more teachers. We've got the space. We've got a purpose for the teacher with social studies sections, reading intervention, so they're going to be busy with a full schedule doing that and reducing class sizes, too, throughout the middle school. So, we just feel that's in the best interest of the district. Number two, and the students. Number two, approve the one-year unpaid childcare leave of absence for Chloe Haydinger, a second-grade teacher for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Number three, approve the employment of Michaela Gillon Water as a second-grade teacher on a one-year limited contract at step zero with a master's degree effective with the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and pending timely completion of all pre-employment requirements, pending the approval of agenda item nine C two, a one-year leave of absence for Chloe Haydinger. Number four, approve the employment of Keith Robinson as a middle school social studies ELA teacher on an initial sequence one-year limited contract at step ten with a master's degree plus thirty semester hours and effective with the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and pending timely completion of all pre-employment requirements, pending approval of agenda item nine C one. Number five, approve the transfer of Lisa Moste from elementary school special education aide to high school special education aide effective with the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Number six, approve amending the initial sequence one-year limited contract of Megan Arada, middle school teacher from a bachelor's degree, step zero, to a bachelor's degree with a hundred and fifty semester hours, step zero, pursuant to receipt of official transcripts. Number seven, approve Sidney Burns as a van driver for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, effective immediately. Number eight, approve the following request for a pay scale advancement pursuant to receipt of official transcripts and effective with the September sixth, two thousand and twenty-four pay for Taylor Mavis from a master's plus fifteen to a master's plus thirty. Number nine, approve the employment of the following classified staff for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year on a one-year limited contract, pending completion of all pre-employment requirements for Holly Harlan, high school cook, Donna Ron, middle school cook, Julianne Mascari, elementary school cook, and Victor Randazzo, bus driver, at step five. Number ten, approve Rachel Gruber as a home instructor for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year for up to a hundred and ninety hours at the tutor hourly rate. Number eleven, approve the following classified subs for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year pending completion of all pre-employment requirements for Dale Jeannie Chapman, Sam Chapman, as a school nurse. Number twelve, approve the following request for an FMLA leave of absence for up to sixty days for Madison Compton, effective August fifteenth. Number thirteen, approve the following athletic department supplemental contracts for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, pending timely completion of all pre-employment requirements as presented, A through E. Number fourteen, approve the following athletic department volunteers for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, pending timely completion of all pre-employment requirements on the next page for Eli Rickley, middle school football. And we gotta go.
Voting live on six. I'll make this motion.
Second.
Motion made by Jen Sherman, seconded by Ann Bender. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sherman? Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
All right, nine D, just one item there. Approve a contract for school security services with the Fairfield County Sheriff's Department for a school resource officer for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Again, we have one at our elementary school and one on this campus here as well.
Can I get a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Rod Johnson, seconded by Ann Bender. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Braden? Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
My last part here, under Personnel Resignations, nine E, accept the resignation of Jamie Johnson, middle school guidance counselor, effective July tenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Can I get a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Matt Braden, seconded by Ann Bender. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Epstein.
And Mrs. Sherman?
Yes. All right, new business? Approve the following policies for our first reading. We met, what?
June twenty-fourth. Yeah, a couple, a few weeks ago.
Any questions about those policies? For our first reading? I'll make this motion. Motion made by Jen Sherman, seconded by Rod Johnson. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
And Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Number eleven, board reports and information, facility management.
Sorry, I kind of covered that. Sorry.
Looking good. Personnel labor? Okay, OSBA?
No real updates.
Summer time. Policy, we just sent those through for first reading. Safety, health, and wellness?
Yeah, October, we got a meeting mid-October. I'll get you the date.
That's coming up?
Yeah.
And finance?
Just looking to February or mark November's meeting.
All right. And upcoming PTO booster board of education meetings. Tomorrow is the music boosters at six-thirty P.M. in the high school media center. August twelfth is the next board of education meeting at six P.M. here in the media center at the middle school. On that same night, the athletic boosters have their meeting at seven P.M. in the middle school cafeteria. Six forty-five, can I get a motion to adjourn? Matt Braden made the motion, seconded by Rod Johnson. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes. Six forty-six, to be exact.